All right. Now, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Pottstown Borough Council of November 6, 2019. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I move to number four, there are two things I'd like to interject. One, some of us had had the privilege of hearing the summary report from the ULI. And part of that on economic development was covered in our local newspaper. There's another part that I want to bring to your attention. In the beginning, Mr. Higbee started talking about challenges we have and the like. And this is one of the slides he put up for those of us in attendance. And that is, it is clear that Pottstown is not shrinking from the difficulty it has been dealt. And at that point, he was talking about conditions beyond our control. All the heavy industry that moved out of the borough, other small businesses that closed down. He mentioned the recession of 2008. But we still move on. Number two said, "Pottstown has the leadership to make great things happen." And I know he was referring to not only the council up here, but the staff that works in this building and those people who are out on the streets every day, working for our residents' benefits. I'm glad he recognizes that we have great leadership and we have all pledged to move forward to do the best we can. Three says, "We have limited local resources, given the job at hand." And I think they learned through interviewing all the people for that week that Pottstown has been hit hard as far as cash flow because of all the changes in assessments, all those reductions. Certain large institutions that are not paying taxes right now, we're dealing with less and less income each year. And yet, this staff puts together a program and executes it. It's phenomenal. Each year, we're doing more and more with less and less. And last, he says, "We must be efficient and focused in order to address key priorities and make measurable progress." What he was not privy to was some of the changes that have been made right here in council. I've had the opportunity this year to create and appoint an Efficient Methods Committee. And under the chairman, Lebedinsky, we started by taking a hard look at the LNI department, both internally and externally. Inside, they made some great progress in reducing the number of forms that any developer would have to fill out in order to start bringing their business here into town. Externally, everyone is meeting with anyone outside who's willing to talk and tell us how it could be done better. And if we can take that idea and apply it here, we're certainly going to do that. Second, we changed the name of a zoning ordinance or zoning committee to an Ordinance Review Committee. And by doing so, under the chairman of Ryan Profskell, we're looking at not just zoning issues, but all the issues in the book, and there are quite a few of them. If we find any that are no longer applicable, we're going to ask council to remove them. Others, if we find are awkward or cumbersome, we're going to do the best to streamline them. So, yes, we've been dealt some bad cards in this hand. And also, yes, I work with a great team of people that are doing everything they can to make life here in Pottstown better than ever before. And I thank you for hearing that. The second addition that's not on your agenda for the evening is our mayor has the privilege of swearing in the new officer. Mayor Henry?
I think she may have done that. You did that.
Oh, ahead of time? Can you rewind the tape and show everybody? Okay. She's efficient, she's ahead of us. So, number four is a presentation, a lifesaving award for Pottstown Police Officer Gregory You didn't do that yet.
No, I'm going to do that right now. So, this is the best part of my job, I have to say. It is my distinct honor and privilege to present this lifesaving award to Officer Gregory Fritz. On September 8, 2019, Officer Fritz responded to 435 Manatani Street for a report of an ambulance responding to that location for a woman who was eight months pregnant and having contractions. Upon his arrival, ahead of the ambulance, Officer Fritz encountered the woman in active labor and the head of the child she was about to deliver was already out. He observed the child was blue and in distress while continuing to console the mother. He was able to determine the umbilical cord was the source of distress and that contractions were compounding the problem by cutting off the baby's air supply as they had heard. Officer Fritz breathed the wrapped cord from around the baby's neck and a moment later, the baby was delivered. Officer Fritz then provided rescue breathing via pediatric bag-valved mask until paramedics were able to cut the umbilical cord and take the baby to the ambulance. Mother and baby boy were both taken to Pottstown Hospital. On September 13, the baby was released from the hospital. Thanks to the efforts of Officer Fritz, both baby and mother survived a very memorable start to this life and have been enclosed to Officer Fritz's career of service to the Pottstown community. The actions of Officer Fritz bring honor to himself, the Pottstown Police Department, and the community in which he serves.
Thank you.
We'll finish strong.
Okay, number five is the presentation of Employee Service Awards. It seems to me that once people start working here for the borough, they tend to make a home out of it and stay. So, Justin?
This is also a very exciting part of my job as well, one that I like to do very much. So, you know, as I said, our employees are some of the greatest assets we have in the borough. And this evening, I'm honored to present our third annual Years of Service Awards. We initiated this recognition program in 2016 to show appreciation for our full-time civilian employees. Our service milestones begin with five years of service through to retirement. And without further ado, on behalf of Borough Council myself, I wish to extend congratulations to all on reaching this important service milestone with the Borough of Pottstown. Your loyalty and commitment to the success of this organization has been noted. Again, thank you for your hard work and much dedication. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Once we take the photo, I would ask that you please line across along the front for a group photo. And just want to say, for everyone that we're going to recognize tonight, this represents 210 years of service to the borough. So, under the Five Years Service Award, we have Keith Place. Monica Maimi Diaz. James Mau. Okay. Under our 10 years of service, we have Janice Lee. Brad Gibson. Next is 15 years of service. We have Terry Jones, Kathleen Hafer, and Charles Hall. Next, we have our 20-year service award winners. And that goes to Christina Pennythacker. And at 25 years of service, we have Kim Ambridge. Next, for our 30 years of service, we have Sandy Sheffo.
And now, we have a resolution. Recognizing Karen C. Lewandowski for 20 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Pottstown. Whereas Karen C. Lewandowski has served the Borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 1999, and whereas during her career with the borough, she served in a number of different capacities, including Finance Department Accounts Clerk II, Accounts Clerk I/Casier's Office, Licensing and Inspections Department Administrative Assistant II. And whereas for the past two years, Karen has worked in the position of Public Works Administrative Assistant II, and during that time, she served our residents regarding street conditions, trash recycling removal, and water distribution concerns in order that residents could receive the best level of customer service possible. And whereas Karen's presence at Borough Hall will be truly missed by the people that have worked with her. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council, that Karen C. Lewandowski is officially recognized for the outstanding service she has provided the borough of Pottstown through 20 years of employment, and further that she has extended best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. Adopted at Pottstown Borough Hall, 100 East High Street, this sixth day of November 2019. Signed by Dan Wean, Council President, and Justin Keller, Borough Manager. And now, we'll have a presentation about Edgewood Cemetery by Andrew Monastri.
Thank you, all. Thank you. I am here, once again, for the seven million times talk about Edgewood Cemetery. Last April 2018, we had the opportunity, Wes Stu and I, to make a difference in Pottstown. Those opportunities are rare. We were presented with a challenge, and the challenge was Edgewood Cemetery. And at the time, we took that challenge, we inherited a cemetery that is owned by Nellin that was completely overgrown and in a state of disgrace. We had no money. What we have are good books, I guess. And we formed a committee, and with people like Kathy Skidgell of the Hill School, Penrod, familiar face everywhere, and people like Hoebart's Run, institutions like Hoebart's Run, Hill School, and the community in general, came together to help us make it look like what it looks like today, which will not be confused with Arlington National Cemetery. But it is respectful, okay? It is respectful, once again. And how we did that is we did that through cajoling, begging, constantly begging. Please give us money. Please give us money. Please help us. Please respect our ancestors. And the community came together. Great. Awesome. We've had successful community cleanups. Last one, October 5. Another 100 people came out from all over the community, cleaned up. We've had people come to us, my friend here, Dr. Mankiewicz, if anybody has noticed recently, this week, the jungle of Clive Street has been tamed. Thank you, Dr. Mankiewicz. He hired at his own expense people to come and cut down the brush there, so it looks respectful, once again. But begging, I can't always count on begging, because eventually, people get tired, because the same people get asked to contribute constantly. So, there has to be a sustainable model to ensure, we're not dealing with this problem five years from now, 10 years from now, next week. So, a little while ago, some business people in the community, Dr. Mankiewicz and John Jones, came to me and asked about a proposal that they thought would create sustainability for the cemetery. Oh, there's the cemetery, okay? And what they approached me with was a concept that would create sustainability for the cemetery for quite some time. As I've explained in my past begging sessions in front of you, the cemetery needs about $25,000 a year to maintain this area. What I mean, maintain it, I mean, cut the grass, okay? And that doesn't include, you know, making the trees look good. That doesn't include that. This is just bare minimum maintenance. So, every year, our committee has to go out and raise $25,000, okay, amongst the kids. And we have been successful for two years. It's great. Awesome. It's tiring as well. So, what happened was, the concept is, is that land, as you can see, has a lot of graves in it, but there is area that has no graves. It is a field. So, here is a concept that Dr. Mankiewicz and Mr. Jones came up with, which is as follows. This will make sure that the grass is cut, the trees are taken care of, leaves are cleaned up, oh, and had an assessed value of $724,000 for that land, which is currently generates zero tax revenue for the borough, it will create, at the current village, it will create an annual payment of $18,646 in taxes to the borough, and to the school, $61,736 on an annual basis. We assume that that goes up with taxes, but that's where we're at right now, okay? And how did that happen? Well, the cemetery becomes a cemetery again. Cemetery becomes a cemetery. And cemeteries are different now, because the concept of cemeteries is a bad model, because there's perpetual care fund that people pay into, and eventually, eventually, that perpetual care will run out, okay? Cemeteries get filled. So, where's the money going to come from? The current model for cemeteries is that about 60% of people get cremated, okay? There's not much of the burial, it's more cremation. So, let's go to the next one. So, as you may know, the burial markers, which were burial, they were done many, something many, many years ago, and they are falling down, and they are not, they're on the ground. It's a shame. The amount of money that would take to correct that disgrace, we don't have, we never have. So, what we need to do is we need to repair these burial markers, we need to install the fencing, it's pretty look nice, reestablish the brick building, there's a brick building for maintenance, and then either utilize an existing nonprofit or create a nonprofit perpetual care fund that will allow for the maintenance of the grounds to have yearly fundraisers and so forth. Additionally, fortunately, due to some of the great work of plenty of the people in this council, the bike trail passes right by the cemetery. The cemetery could become a trail stop where people come and learn about those people who came before us. They could learn about the head managers of the Hill School. They could learn about Anne Ridmore. They could learn about General Horace Neely. They could learn about all the cool people who came before us and became, and helped the Pottstown Pottstown laws, or did. So, here's the thing, here's the concept that we would like to help. What we would like, what they would like to do is they would like to create a for-profit entity, okay? That would create a clombarium, and the first thought that I thought that was a new element on the periodic table, but it's not, okay? And mausoleum, establish a cemetery with scatter bonds, because people would come and throw their, their deceased ashes. And so, we create a nonprofit, or a for-profit. And once we create a for-profit, the ability for the cemetery to perpetuate itself grows. But that's not enough. That's simply not enough. Okay. So, what the concept was, is that since the cemetery is open by now, what happened is that we would need the borough to get involved. What do we need the borough to do? Well, we need the borough to take the cemetery over for like a second, for like a, literally a hot second, okay? Take it over for the condemnation process, and take it over, and then at the same time, once they take it over, transfer the property to the for-profit entity. And the for-profit entity, what happened at that particular time, is that an immediate transfer tax benefit of about $15,000, or $30,000, because it will be fully transferred tax benefit, will immediately generate it, and they will take this over the cemetery. Concept being is that they will subdivide or separate the non-grave part from the cemetery. So, that cemetery now will have two distinct parcels. Oh, look at that. What we have here is a concept, what they can do. What they can do is they can put a mixed-use building that can serve the community out there, and I don't know if there's much out there in any way of retail in that area off of Beach and Clive and Edgewood. What they would do is they would create businesses there, okay? There could be residential space up there, okay? And what that will do is that will create income for that. How does that create income for Edgewood Cemetery or for the maintenance? Well, we would request an endowment to set up, an ironclad, rock-solid endowment that is used clearly only for the cemetery, only for cutting grass. It's not used to pay anybody's salaries, it's not used for anything other than cutting those grasses, okay? And what do we need? We need about $500,000 for that. If we put that in the endowment, it generates $5,000 worth of, or 5% interest, that's $25,000. So, as long as that endowment exists, it will generate enough income to keep the cemetery at least in the condition that it's in there. Now, as this thing becomes more of an ongoing venture, then other things can happen, like improvement of the roads in there, installation of lights, so that trailgoers who we want to come in, and we would like them to come in, visit, learn a little bit about the history of Pottstown, and then go to this lovely place, whatever it is, cutting grass, but we're going to go someplace, and they're going to come to town, stop, perhaps refresh themselves, okay, with something healthy, and then continue wandering through Pottstown. I see it, it's very possible. Another version of it. Additionally, the for-profit entity will make an additional $5,000 annual donation to the borough for the first one, the third, the fourth, and the third, and then, oh, four and five. There's a $10,000 to the annual donation for that, in addition to the annual tax revenue that we will get. So, what does this do? What does this do? Well, it takes a piece of land that produces nothing for the borough, except the ability for me to spread oxygen here and talk to you about it on a semi-frequent basis, it presents, becomes a taxable entity, it creates property taxes, schools... presents, becomes a taxable entity, that creates property taxes, school taxes, and it ensures our lifetimes. Our lifetimes. We're not going to be talking about this cemetery as a disgrace. We're not going to be talking about how badly our, 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 how it looks on us. We're not. And that's what I can support. I can support something that sits there and says, here's a solution to a problem. This is a problem. What, self-committee, have ragtag this? But you know, one day, we'll get higher. So I, we gotta come up with a solution, we gotta be creative. And what I've noticed about this town so far, is that we all have creative people. And this is a creative solution to this issue. I am sure that there are people out there that will be surprised at this particular plan. And I welcome their input, because, as I always said, I don't learn anything from people who agree with me. I only learn from people who differ, because I have to consider others' concerns. So, this is a possible solution. I can support that. What I'm asking all of you is to consider it, okay? Is to ask Mr. Warner. To look into the issues that we would face, to see if we can come up with a more permanent solution to the, to the challenge of the cemetery. Because it's a challenge, not a problem. Not a problem to make sure that people respect it. It's not a problem, but it is a challenge, because we have to base money. And that's sort of the difference. Look at this. Benefits to the borough of Pots Town. Leave the borough any liability, beautification, perpetual care, ongoing maintenance, improvements to one of the oldest cemeteries within the borough, and we got tax income. Seems like there's some benefits there. Seems like there's some stuff that people all agree is pretty good. I'm sure there's stuff that we're not thinking about. But these are very, very, very good concepts, good thoughts. Oh, questions. There's a big question line. All I'm asking is that you consider that, to think how you can possibly solve this challenge of Edgewood Cemetery, so that you don't count on small ragtag groups of people to go out and knock on people's doors. This could be the solution. It could be great to true you, because you know that you guys will look at creative concepts, and I don't think there's much more creative stuff than this. What do you think, Mr. Warner?
Pretty creative. Obviously, since we bought it, it's obviously creative, but, you know, I've been here in town longer than I ever thought I would be. And, you know, when you come down High Street, coming from the hospital, you know, that is one of the things you see before you get to the downtown. And if it's a ragtag thing, your impression of the town starts right there. There's two things that have always upset me, that and 400 block of High Street. You know, the downtown is getting rebirthed. It's unbelievable. What short of pine, all the things that have happened are happening, but everybody speaks of the rebirth of Pots Town, and it truly is happening. So this is just another thing to create a rebirth.
Oh, one thing I did forget. What I forgot was, this Saturday, the Travis Magnus Foundation, okay, which is going to be having an event at the cemetery, starting at 9:00. And with the...
9:30.
9:30?
9:30? 9:00.
I'm waiting that day, I don't know.
I'll be there. So, and what they're going to do with the, by one of our other community members, not a board member, just a community member, Bronwyn DeMezo, who is the sister of Joe Price, named Seal, who was killed. And what they're going to do is they're going to put markers and flags on all the veterans' graves, and that's going to happen. And I think that's really cool. Not only because it's really a great idea and a respectful thing to honor our veterans, but it's really cool that somebody from the communities just came in and said, man, I want to do something. And that's what we need. So, the concept is, in a nutshell, take it over, give it, right? Subdivide, they subdivide it, they start off with cemetery, establish a fund, you know, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for, creates a minimum standard of care and presentation or presence, and hopefully, it grows from a cemetery, which was a, who was scary place for dead people, to a integral part of the community, integral part of the community, where people can learn, you know, those who went before us. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Well, I guess I discussed it with the borough manager briefly before, and it's, there's also a risk that if we don't think of something to do with it, it's, we might have to take it, we like it or not, being the borough, because if it falls in disrepair, I guess there's a chance that the county might make us do it, and then we, then we, the taxpayer's on the, on the hook for maintenance. So this would be a very good alternative to that, obviously.
Yes, there is provision in the fiduciary code that allows the cemetery to be, forces the borough to take it, but the, the concept is so, the, um, it's a very, very old statute, right, Mr. Warner?
You are correct.
Thank you. But it's extremely old. I think the, the minimum contribution that they're required to make is like, you know, $300, okay? Because apparently that was like the Kings Ransom, 1802 or whatever it was. So, but that's what we want to do. Thoughts?
Do you have a, do you have a sustainability plan for the businesses that you wish to put in? I would hate to see you undertake this, and then you have a business that comes in for a year or two and then shuts down. Do you have a contingency plan for those kind of businesses? Or, another thing is that the placement of the building that you want to put is off of High Street. While he said, coming in the, coming in the, coming in the Pots Town, that High Street's, you know, the banner, how are we going to funnel or advertise that? There's buildings back here that's going to bring in either residential or business opportunities.
I think that's a heck of a good question. I do. Because I like to say to people, I'll just cut the grass. I'll just cut the grass. Okay? That's his problem.
You know, one of the thoughts is, you know, this is Juxton Post at Hill School. The Hill School has essentially Turner entrance off of High Street onto Beet Street. All the things that come in, you know, the people come from out of town, that's how they're directed. And, face it, the Hill School has a lot of people in there. Honestly, the headmaster will not let the kids walk down High Street because of 400 block, so they're not permitted to come into downtown. So the stores that would go up on that end would be servicing that population, and anybody else who wants to utilize them. So you have a ready market right there from the Hill School.
And that area along Beet Street, it's certainly underutilized for that community to, the people live around here, to have stores, walkable stores. We like the walkable, we like the bike trails, we like the bike stuff. We do. Like some, geez. So, there's a, there's, they have no competition. So it's going to be their job to figure out businesses that are going to complement the needs of that area. But that's everybody's job. That's everybody, every business owner's job, to think about what is needed there, because they want to succeed.
You know, we did a survey of the faculty and students, what they'd like to see in the building Juxton Post, and, you know, we got a fairly good idea, you know, a barber shop, a cleaner, you know, they came up with rational things that they just don't have at their disposal. But it's, I don't want to make it seem like this is an annex for the Hill School, it's for everybody in that area.
I, I'm just worried about getting the name out, the word out, that it's not going to be on High Street, it's going to be on Beach, you know, it's only one block off, but...
Yeah. As I said, now that the Hill is making the entrance on Beet Street, just the traffic that goes into the Hill School will help make it visible. The other thing, I don't want to minimize what you see on High Street, because it's going to be visible that something has happened to, something is pretty unsightly right now. I couldn't believe how much better when I had them take the jungle down, as you described it today. So I had the jungle taken down yesterday, and it really was remarkable how much better it looked. Because I've been driving up and down, I live on Time Street, so I've been driving up and down there, and I thought, wow, it actually, I think, added a foot to the roadway when they cleaned it up, and, because it was all covered with... And then, of course, after we do this all yesterday, they came and took a telephone pole. I guess they're changing some of the telephone poles. There must be one right there. A telephone pole on the ground was placed, so I guess they're waiting to take down the other telephone pole. But it's remarkable how much better it looks now.
Tom, your, your point is well-taken.
Thank you.
Is well-taken. And this is not the Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come.
This is a little bit of a risky project, I think.
Well, there's no other, there's no other commercial around that. It's mostly residential and...
Right, yeah. Well, there's commercial, there's a orderly cab across the street.
And then Edgewood School's right there, too.
Well, it's not...
That's what I'm saying, so there's no expansion beyond that.
It was going to be the meadows, that Tom Hilton wanted to put in there, there's meadows in there. The Hill School, you know, would like to get that, but there's angst against the Hill School, because everything they take goes off the rolls. But one of the things that John and I would like to do is buy some of the property from the Hill School and lease it back to them, and put it back on the rolls. We looked at doing that at the old Harps Garage, right, on High Street. The problem is, there's some environmental issues there, so we didn't want to tackle that.
Great, thank you.
Don, just to follow up on what you had said, I mean, this is all a concept, so nobody's really gotten into the weeds just yet, other than cutting the grass. But with all that being said, there's zoning issues. The council would have to look at the zoning district and what uses might be permitted, how you would do a mixed use, or some type of overlay, or permit certain non-residential uses by, you know, conditional use, all those things would be up for grabs, so I don't know that anybody's necessarily married to a use or a plan at this point.
It's a great idea, it's just I want to see it's the same.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Warner, I, I could, all I'm here asking, asking this body, is to allow us to explore the concept. Explore it, okay? And come back to you again, and again, and again, and again, okay? Hear your concerns, hear your, hear the concerns, and see if we can come up with something that can address a challenge that we faced. And that's all I'm asking. The only thing that we're asking for is to begin the process, to begin the process of what, to address this challenge, and who, or whom, we should work with to put this forward. What is the next step? You guys say this is a good idea, or it hasn't happened. What's the next step? I have to go to the next step. I have to go to the next step. And I'm doing the next step. Well, if we don't take the first step, we stay still. That's all we're asking.
Andrew, can I ask you a question? In this research that you're doing for, for this, do you, are you going to talk to the neighbors, like the people in the area?
Oh my gosh, they're the most important people. The neighbors are the most important people, because they have the most at stake, okay? You can't, I have found in my 35 years, I'm sorry, that, I have found that you can't cram something down somebody's throat. You have to bring them in. You have to make them part of this. You can't just sit there and say, you will, okay? You can't, okay? You gotta say, what's your concerns? What are you worrying about? What are you worrying about? And then we sit there and talk there.
Is what you want. I mean, let me, you know, if this is, as you said, this is not the Field of Dreams, build it and they will come. If we don't build the right thing, they won't come. As you pointed out, you know, it's all, you have to supply a whole neighborhood with something they want to come there, and something that beautifies their neighborhood, makes it better, so all their property values go up.
When the Beet Street lots were presented many years ago. I was involved in that with our fusion. And we basically had community meetings to listen to people yell at us. It's okay. It's okay for you to yell at us. It's fine. Tell us what your concerns are, and we will try to address them. Not if your concerns are ridiculous, like, I can't do them, okay, I can't go here, okay? I can't help you, but if you have issues that need to be addressed, parking, safety, lighting, okay, all those types of things, we gotta consider it. Because what will happen if we don't consider it, is that, is that the people that need to approve this won't approve it, because we didn't respect their voters. So, that...
You know, the other basic principle that I work, a good deal is a good deal for everybody. If it's not a good deal for everybody, it's a bad deal.
Who, can I go ahead?
Are you good? Thank you. Oh, now it's my turn.
Oh.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'm sorry I was long-winded.
So, do my, my fellow counselors, rather than putting another item on the agenda Monday evening, is there anyone who would oppose directing our staff to look further into this? Or Tuesday? Otherwise, take your team, Justin, and follow this up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, under Subcommittee Reports, Infrastructure, Vice President Kulp.
Memorial Park Place 3. At this time, this is the 17th of October, the playground was half-done, installed, rubberizing and paving done. Dog park has been repaired and restored. Field 1 was finishing, Field 2 was the worst one. We repaired it in-house, saved a lot of money. Seating going on now, well, that was in October. A lot of community interest in, in Maple Street Courts, working out well so far. Licing inspections, notices going out for trash, issues on Third Street, everything flowing rather smooth. Good things going on, property transport's going up. Thugs Department. Public Works. Paving moving along, cleanup done by next meeting. Aerie Street, new box for sediment going into Manetownee, so they have to take care of that. Stone Roads and Alley, grant received, Watersure Project that Wilson are washing a lot of rock. Closed Loop almost done, waiting... Closed Loop almost done, waiting for a couple of polls, and that's about it.
Great. Ms. Clerk, tell us about economic development.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. Once again, great things happening. Sorry I wasn't here last month, I was on vacation, but things just continued on. I think one of the most important things that we should all be celebrating is happy sixth anniversary to Lily's Grill. Adam and his wife have six years.
Wow.
So, yes, and they have certainly been committed to the community, and we should all be very grateful and thankful to their success. Gillian Dean had a ribbon cutting this past week, so that was another great milestone for the downtown. And the, I met with the new owners of what was the Kiss Motorcycle Building, 22 East High, just yesterday, and they are very energized in continuing to grow their business and having a presence here in Pottstown. So more to come on that. The Mercury Building has sold, it went to settlement a few weeks ago. There is a concept for it, the new owners are moving straight ahead with it, and it, the concept is to turn it into a BTEC Hotel with a lounge on the first floor of Urban and Whiskey. So, we're really looking forward to that, and Evan and I hope you'll enjoy it. So I also want to talk about all of the things that the businesses have come together and collaborated on holiday celebrations, which is a lot of fun things to do. So Shop Small on November 30th, we hope you will come and support the businesses and the many organizations. And I want to remind everybody, in addition to what you think about going once upon a time and maybe buying a new dress or a tie for Dad or Mom, I would like you to think about gift certificates, because we have lots of businesses and you don't need to know somebody's size for that, or giving to the many great organizations that help this town go. On December the 6th, the, also the, at the clock tower, there will be a tree put up on Shop Small Saturday. On December 6th, at the alley, there will be a tree that will be lit that evening, Friday that evening. On December 7th, we will have Santa arrive by dragon boat on the river at Riverfront Park, and then he will go make a stop in the Innovation Center. From there, he will be given a ride by a fire truck up to the alley where the Santa Shack will be located. And we will also be having a Seek and Find based on A Christmas Story, which is the show that opens on Friday night at Steel River. So you will be able to go to area businesses and get your card filled out by seeking and finding things like the rifle and the leg lamp and the decoder ring and all of those fun things, and then at the alley, you'll go to collect your prize, which will be a fun experience. Beverly's is having cookie decorating from 10 to noon on that day, and also, I was informed this morning that the center, which is where the Y is located, they're doing activities with Santa as well. Santa's going to be very busy that day. Smith Family Plaza, there is a tree being donated, and volunteers will be helping to decorate that tree. That will be lit on the night of the 7th at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, with the planters being announced by the mayor, the winners of the planter contest. Businesses along High Street have adopted a planter this year, and they will be using their creative talents to decorate the planters. And there is a whole team that will be judging those, and then those, those will be announced that evening, those prizes will be announced that evening. I think there will be three categories in addition to just bragging rights. And then we hope that you will walk over to the theater because you will already have your tickets for A Christmas Story. That Sunday at First Presbyterian Church at December 8th, there is a group of professional musicians, vocalists, that will be performing at First Presbyterian Church, and we also have the house tour, which benefits Go For. So there's a lot of activity. What does that have to do with economic development? Because there are things for people to come and do and be excited about, and they just add to more and more people wanting to be here. I made a pitch the other day during a podcast at Tri-County Area Chamber. We also have a lot of office inventory, we are starting to work on that, we've sent out a survey to area brokers. We want people to bring their businesses here, we have great assets for their employees, which is a great thing for their employees to have, just to be able to walk downtown. And I will tell you, I will wrap up where I started. The people who bought the Kiss Building, that is one of the things that has really attracted them to this area, is all that is going on in town, and it just brings a quality of life to their work life as well. That's my report.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more. At the end of November, J.J. Radigans will be open.
So, Councilor Lindsay, they planned all this for your birthday on December 7th?
That's right, December 7th, 1941.
I don't think so.
Let them marinate. There you go, Pearl Harbor. Yes, that's it.
Okay. See, is Transportation, Vice President Kulp. A meeting? Ordinance Review Committee, Councilor Proskel.
Well, I was in the, the meeting for about five minutes, and my wife called and told me that my one-year-old had dumped a bunch of Comet Disturger into his face, so I had to leave. He's fine, but it wasn't for the meeting.
Baby smells clean up.
Yeah.
Always getting him.
Efficient Methods Committee, Councilor Lebedinsky.
This meeting had software updates concerning the rental system. The rental invoiced, invoicing was updated and merged to the database from Casell to CMIS, which I'm not totally familiar with yet, but I'm getting there. They reviewed it with the LNI staff. They also have a, provided a function to review the accounts before invoicing, a simple interface for the invoicing. Other parts of that program is they installed the finance section to, to record the payments correctly. Other system updates were just general invoicing and a business section for fire safety, business session and fire safety inspections. So we're getting all this coordinated, online, paperless, so that when we need it, the information's available a lot more readily, and we're moving forward, which is good.
And they will be able to function more efficiently now. Very good.
Little by little.
Under Boards, Emergency Services, Chief.
We had a busy month this month in the fire department. We had 99 calls, which was, gives us 906 for the year, but three of them were significant, and one was almost $44,000 in damage up on Lincoln Street. So that was an accidental house fire in the afternoon. The big thing was, we had over 50 fire safety events with volunteers and the career guys going out there. The preliminary numbers are, we touched about 800 families and kids at the schools and different functions in the, in the borough. Other than that, we gave Doug an award, which a lot of people don't know, like, he left, but Doug's a lifetime member of the fire department, thirty years of the North End.
Oh.
And he was Assistant Chief, so we kind of missed that and his little recognition.
Oh, yeah.
How about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Relations, Ms. Lovegood.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. November is Native American Heritage Month. This commemorative month aims to provide a platform for Native people in the United States of America to share their culture, their traditions, music, prayer, dance, and raise the concepts of life. Veterans Day is November the 11th, honoring those who have served in the United States Armed Forces, and November the 28th is Thanksgiving, a day of giving thanks. The panel exhibit entitled The Long Road to LGBTQ+ Equality in PA that I informed you about last month, that has been delayed and being displayed in the Montgomery County Community College North Hall Gallery on the West Campus at 18 Ti Street. I'm not sure when it's going to be, but it's just delayed. On Monday, I represented the commission at the Leadership Law Enforcement and Love Attacking Anti-Semitism and Racism in the Commonwealth. There was a program at Salem Baptist Church in Abington. Reverend Mitchell moderated the question and answer and discussion with Attorney General Josh Shapiro and Chad Dion Lacetier, who is the Executive Director of the Human Relations Commission. Needs to say it was a packed house. There were informative discussions around the rise of the anti-Semitism and racism in the Commonwealth. And as the leaders of different community organizations that were there, some suggestions as to what we can do included some training, some teaching of our history, having honest, open dialogues, and the need to listen and understand one another. It was a very successful event. It was very impactful, it was a really neat event. Now, the commission's November meeting, that's going to be held next Wednesday, November 13th at 6:00 PM in House of Chambers, and the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council is scheduled to make a presentation, and all of welcome to it.
Great.
Sorry, Marsha, did you get my email with the proposed ordinance for the LGBTQ community?
Oh, yes, I did. That's why the Congress comments.
Great.
Land Bank, Ms. Penrod.
I thought all these people here earlier were here for the Land Bank report.
I am.
Our first grant application request will be filed next Friday, major milestone. We are meeting with Montgomery County officials to share what we're up to. They're a lot more interested in the Land Bank now that there's one here, and we're going to see what we can do to coordinate information exchange. The website is now up and running on the new Borough website. Thank you, staff. The Blight to Bright Breakfast, sponsored by the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania, which I think I mentioned before, will be on December 5th, and you will be invited. And it was, the Land Bank was mentioned favorably in the recent ULI presentation, which I thought was a cool thing.
Very good. And while you're there, tell us about the library.
On November 13th, the Family Reading Program is on the subject of transportation, at which the library will be distributing free booster seats for kids, courtesy of the Department of Health and Human Services. We've done this before, but I just, it's the first I've actually learned about it, so I thought it was pretty cool. We have, out of necessity, because of the requests we keep getting, we've created, the staff has created a handout listing all the places to eat in Pottstown. It's a full page, it's fine print, and they have to keep updating it all the time, which is very annoying that we have all these new places coming. And the other side is also a page of things to do in Pottstown, and our printer wasn't working today, so I'll bring copies and you can distribute them. And then Friday at 2:00, Bill Haley Jr., local author and businessman, will do an author's talk about his new book, Crazy Man Crazy, about his father, Bill Haley, and the Comets. It's a free program. He will have books for sale and signing. It's quite the story, and if you have any baby boomers or music fans or book fans in, on your Christmas list, please come and buy a book.
Very good. Thank you. Now, next, Councilor Kirkland is not here, but Councilor Trenita, can you give us any update on the Ricketts Center?
Okay, I, they had a trunk or treat last week, and thank you again for the candy. Dan, Dan brought candy to my house for the kids, and Jo and I...
I would have been there, I just couldn't get back to town in time.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. All the candy was gone, and the kids was really appreciative of that. It was, it was not as many people as we expected to come, but there was, it was enough, it was enough, and the kids had candy and everything. David, Charles was there, Hannah Davis, Rachel and her husband, William, and if I forgot anybody, please blame my mind, not my heart. Yes, so it was, it was really nice. The kids got to have, we did the trunk or treat, we got to see all the costumes and stuff, and then they all went inside, and they had hot dogs and chips and stuff, so by the time they got home, they were really high of candy.
Great.
Thanks to us.
And while your mic is still on, tell us about the school district.
Okay, so I went to the school board meeting, and they are having town hall meetings currently for the Edgewood School. They're thinking about bringing the kindergarten center and moving the fifth graders back to the elementary school. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend because of time and work, and they are having a meeting this Friday at the admin building, Friday the 8th, between 9:00 and 10:00 AM, so, let's see if I can try to make that one.
Okay. Okay, Madam Mayor, may we have your report?
So we had a pretty busy and successful October in Pottstown, I would have to say. We had Oktoberfest and National Night Out, the Powell Food Truck Festival, I met with the Pottstown Care Students. I was supposed to be the mayor of Whoville for their doctors, or for their SUSE float, but unfortunately with the rain and the parade was moved, their float will be next year. We had a brief tour of Montgomery County Community College and met the new vice president, who has gone to every single meeting. I've seen her everywhere in Pottstown, so she's really getting involved, I think that's going to be a good addition to the college. PCN Network came out and filmed lots of individuals and the Borough for a Explore PA commercial that they're going to be doing to promote Pottstown, and Justin, I think that is going to be out in December or...
Yeah, it's a 30-minute television show, and it should come out sometime late spring, early summer on PCN, Pennsylvania Cable Network Television, under the Explore PA Borough's TV show series.
PCA, Pottstown Community Action, we spent, I think it was two Saturdays in a row. We scraped off the glue and chiseled the glue off the pavers in Chestnut Street Park, and then the following week, we installed pavers. There are still some missing because they need to be specially cut, so those will be replaced in, I think, the next couple of weeks. I'd like to thank Genesis Housing for the grant, Habitat and the Philly Fires Company, who came out and rinsed off all the debris, so we would have a clean slate, too.
And you helped.
I did, I got to use a fire hose, it was, it was pretty awesome. We had Hots on High, trunk or treat, so many Halloween and trick-or-treating activities for the kids. Children's Discovery Center fundraiser and presentation, Carousel of Flavor, Trenita and I spent a glorious day together eating the most delicious food in Pottstown.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
We had our, oh, ULI came out and Urban Land Institute, and did an interview of individuals in the Borough, I participated in that. We had our Halloween... We had our Halloween parade and costume contest. Then I also judged the costume contest at Manatani Still Works. And I think I deserve a huge round of applause for holding off the weather for Halloween so trick-or-treating could actually happen from six a.m. I also participated last weekend in a scavenger hunt fundraiser to benefit the teenage son of, in memory of his mother, who is one of our lost team members of our Relay for Life team. And I have to say, this was the most amazing fundraiser I have ever participated in, and it involved Potts Grove, Pottstown businesses. I went to places I've never even heard of in Pottstown. There's a bar called Carpe's. They close at 5:00, but he was very happy. I think that was a lot of people. What?
Nothing.
Okay. It was really neat. You got to go out and take pictures and promote Pottstown, so I really think that we should model that and do some scavenger hunt fundraisers. We had our PCA meeting, pension board meeting. Last night, I volunteered at the auditions for the Rotary Performing Arts Scholarship Competition at the Hill School. And then we had our community leaders breakfast this morning at Tri-County. I had my first breakfast at Honey's Homebrewed Cafe, which I have to say was fairly delicious. I had avocado toast and green goddess. I highly recommend it. We also had the grand opening for Loz Desserts, or is it LA's Desserts? Loz, okay. They have gluten-free treats, and they're really amazing. You wouldn't know they were gluten-free. So that was October. November 8th, from four to Uber, Kiki is having a contest, a bartending contest between Potts Grove and Pottstown. Bartending challenge and the proceeds are going to benefit the cluster, so please come out and cheer on our Pottstown bartender. Then the next day, so after you get home from Uber, set your alarm, 9:30, please be at Edgewood Cemetery to help clean up and place flags for the veterans. And then at 5:00 PM, there's a Miami-style cafe food truck at the distillery. The 10th, from 8:00 to 4:00 at Sly Fox, is the Cyclocross. You can either participate or watch. I will not be participating, but I may watch. The 14th at Lily's, from 4:00 to 9:00, is a fundraiser for Go Fourth. Proceeds will go to benefit our Go Fourth Festival for 2020. The 16th, from 6:00 to 9:00, is the Rotary Performing Arts Competition at the Hill School Arts Center. It is a scholarship competition. I have to say, from the auditions last night, they're having auditions tonight and tomorrow. Just from the auditions that I saw last night, these kids are amazing. There was two harps, a pianist, multiple singers. I mean, it was just phenomenal talent from all over. And the 20th, from 5:30 to 8:30, is the Rotary B2B Mixer at Red Horse. And the 24th, from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Carousel, is the Annual Client Appreciation Pie Giveaway. Bring donations for Operation Backpack, and there will be activities for kids and pie, and who doesn't love pie? And then basically, as Peggy said, just block out December, like every weekend day in December. Just block it out. You're going to be in town. There's something to do from like morning to night, so more on that.
Okay, great. Mr. Manager.
All right, wow. You guys are getting, you guys are getting good. You're starting to cover stuff on my list now, so that's just great. Just a couple updates to stay attention to. You should have, some of you should have received flyers already and your utility bills explaining our new trash contract and some of the changes that will come along with that. So we do not yet have a date yet for when the new gray trash totes will be distributed, but once we do, we will put that on our website, so stay tuned there to find out when that will be. Also, we're also getting very close to getting parking kiosks installed in the downtown. And in the next couple of weeks, we have a brochure, thanks to Deb Penrod, which helped, assisted in preparing that, which basically spells out the how, who, what, where, when, why of parking with Park Mobile in Pottstown. So look for that. We'll be distributing that to the businesses within that parking district where paid parking is in effect. And then also, we're in the process of reconvening with the Parking Committee to look at our parking permits. And right now, to encourage more use of our public lots, we are planning on offering a parking permit to any business resident or visitor that wants to buy them. That would allow them to park in a space in any one of our lots, 1 through 6. So that, we did that in an effort to try to respond to some of the concerns we got from businesses regarding their employees and being able to park. So this is a pretty discounted rate to park for the whole year. So look for more information to that, on that to come soon. Just an update on our 2019 paving project. That is pretty much complete. Everything's been paved at this point. There's still some sealing that needs to be done along the curbs, but we've accomplished 2.7 miles of paving this summer. And we still have our water sewer replacement project underway, mainly in Washington and Wilson Street areas right now. Once that's complete, there'll be another 1.3 miles of roadways paved curb to curb as a part of those utility replacements. And as Counselor Culp had mentioned, our closed-loop traffic signal project is very close to being wrapped up. Pendot, I heard from them today, they hope to go live with the smart communication between the signals in the next couple of weeks. Also, I was in Harrisburg last week, got called down there by Representative Starisi, and I met with one of the deputies from DCED, as well as an assistant to the Appropriations Chair, so that they could explain to me two new funding opportunities that have opened up through PA Small Water and Sewer and the H2O Program, which will actually allow us to seek funding for the arch systems here in Pottstown. So you'll see later on tonight, we'll be asking for a resolution on Tuesday for, to address both of those issues. That's it.
Very good. Next, Pottstown Collision Center at 601-619-West High Street. Where do we stand?
If the council recalls, I guess at our August meeting, you had approved the conditional use for this project up at 601-619-High Street. I believe you saw a sketch plan, and you have now a preliminary land development plan in your packet for the proposed collision center at the property. The Planning Commission reviewed this project at its October meeting. I believe you have the Borough Engineers Review Letter, the county letter as well. The applicant agreed to comply with the comments outlined in the engineered letter. The Planning Commission recommended council approve the plan, subject to compliance with those comments. There was a waiver request letter that the Planning Commission also supported. One of the items was a contribution of $500 per tree, to the extent they couldn't meet the tree ordinance. I think the applicant's engineer might be here this evening if there's any questions, but I think you're all familiar with the plan because I think we saw it in conjunction with the conditional use hearing. Obviously, you know the conditional use approval is under appeal. It's still pending in county court. You are permitted to approve the plan, subject to a satisfactory resolution of that appeal in the applicant's favor. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure the applicant's engineer would answer any questions as well. And it's ready to be listed for Tuesday night, if you're ready to do so. Mr. Ween, you were at the Planning Commission meeting, if I missed anything.
It was unanimously approved at the Planning Commission asking for council's approval. Any questions to this? Hearing none. Will list it for Tuesday evening. 13, Certified Local Government Renewal.
Yeah, so probably most of you won't recall, but some time ago, the Borough enrolled in a certified local government program, which offers tools, funding, and technical support for rehabilitation of historic properties. We've been informed that the Borough's designation is set to expire unless renewed at the end of the year, before the end of the year. And some of the advantages of being in this program are extra points that we would get on grant applications to DCED's Community Assistance Program, which we do, you know, go for quite frequently with, in concert with paid, as well as other grants that are offered through DCED and others. The CLG program also added a new feature. They now provide an in-house architect that can be used by CLG members to prepare development alternatives for historic buildings. So if you have a developer that comes in, they have an old building, don't really know what to do with it, how to treat it, we could reach out to this person and use them to come up with a schematic for how it could work for that applicant and still fit in with this historic context of the town.
Is that service free to us?
There's, yeah, there's no cost to be a part of this program.
Okay.
What they're asking for is a resolution stating that we would like to continue in the program, and also an intergovernmental agreement between the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
Great. Any questions, councilors? Not, we'll list that for Tuesday. 14, Loan and Rights Away Maintenance. Now, this is an extension of an existing contract?
Correct. Yeah, if you recall, this was a contract that was approved last year for the 2019 lawn mowing. We would ask that this contract get extended. We awarded to Green Advantage Landscaping, and we would lock in the cost for that for the second year, the same costs.
Okay. No questions, we'll list that for action. 15, Sports Enterprises Lease Renewal.
This is a lease that we, the Borough has for Sunstrom Fields, that we lease out to a local youth baseball club. And we would like to ask council to extend this lease under, in accordance with the existing lease that we have in place.
Okay, no changes?
No, no changes to the lease.
All right. No questions, we'll list that for action. 16, Resolution, H2O and Small Water and Sewers Grants.
So these were the two programs that I was telling you about that are now available. These were previously only available for potable water and sanitary sewer work. The state did recently change that, I think last year, to now allow stormwater projects to qualify. So the small water and sewer are for projects from $30,000 to $500,000 with a 15% match. The H2O program is for projects of 500,000 minimum, up to 20 million maximum. That has a 50% match. And if you recall, we did receive a $280,000 grant from the CFA Floodway Mitigation Program. That 280,000 that we received would be eligible to be used as a match for either of these grants. So there is a chance that we could string together a group of funding sources and start addressing some of these issues with very little out-of-pocket money from the Borough. So we're still determining the amounts that we want to go for. We're going to apply for both grants, and we're probably targeting a 500,000 one for the small water and sewer, and somewhere between 500,000 and a million for the H2O grant. We'll provide more clarity on the exact numbers, along with the match commitments that we would be obligated to on Tuesday night for your consideration.
Okay. No problem. We'll list that for Tuesday. 17 is an ordinance for 401A Defined Contribution Plan. This is for the non-uniform pension.
Yeah, correct. This ordinance essentially codifies the 401A Defined Contribution Plan that we've established through our AFME employees. So this would essentially allow us to provide this plan by ordinance to any employees hired after January 1st, 2020.
Anything you want to add? No, the action would be just to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance, so you could adopt it in December.
Very good. No questions, we'll list it for Tuesday evening. 18, Sly Fox Track Club, 5K on January 1st.
Sly Fox would like to close Glasgow from Circle of Progress to Rice Street to West Chestnut, Prince, and right onto Glasgow and back. The closure would be from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM on January 1st, 2020.
So that would give all the polar bears, swimmers, time to change clothes to go running.
There you go.
Okay.
They could go as they are, too.
Okay, we'll list that for Tuesday. 19, Sly Fox Track Club, the Super Bowl 5K.
Yes, so these are the same, it looks like the same streets again. That would be closed on February 2nd, 2020, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM.
Great. No questions, we'll list that. So much for action for Tuesday night. Now it's time for comments from our citizens present. And those of you addressing council, please note there is a three-minute time limit.
Nelson Swartley, please.
Welcome.
About three years ago, I decided to invest in Pottstown in my purchase of a single home out in the area of the YMCA on Wilson Street, Wilson and North Adams, out in that area. And so I put money into it and looked for a tenant and found one. And shortly after the tenant moved in, I got flooding in the basement, and more flooding, and more flooding, and more water, and like the 30 cleanups had to be done to get the water out of the house. So eventually I had spent a lot of money and hired some kind of a specialist, which I had difficulty in finding the person to do it right. And he agreed with my proposal of how to best deal with it. And so I'm now pumping what I deem as Pottstown water out of my house, because the water is rushing down North Adams Street and comes down to the corner of Wilson, and makes a bend there, and it isn't all going down in the storm drains. It's going around a bend, and it's going down Wilson, and it's flooding Wilson Street, and this water goes underground, and it's flooding out the people's basements in that area. So I came in and talked to Dr. Yerger, and he was very helpful. I had three meetings with him, and he even stayed late in the evening and talked to me about the history of what's going on with a lot of water problems in Pottstown. So there's others. But the thing is that it seems that, well, I went to a meeting with Water and Sewer Authority, and four of us people that are having our basements flooded in that area, some have finished basements and have to clear that stuff out and redo it and put in new drainage systems. We went to the meeting, and we had letters written, and they were supposed to be passed on then to council. Now that was, our meeting with Water and Sewer Authority was last year, December 18th, and they told us the letters would be passed on to Borough Council, and then something we hear from them.
You have 30 seconds left.
I have not heard anything to this date, and that's about a year ago. And I think that I'm being ignored. We're being ignored, our problem's being ignored. Right now, they're out there digging up the street and putting in new sewer lines. Well, I think other lines, other water lines could have been put in at the same time to drain extra water away from that area.
Okay. Your time has expired, but- Okay. Your time has expired, but, okay.
And why, why hasn't anything been done?
If you can look into that?
Yeah, we'll look into that further. I'll talk to our Public Works Director and see what, what his analysis of the situation is as well.
There, I have a picture of the flooding out there. There was a car came through the water. It's, it's up over the curbs.
Right.
The car went into the water, raced up out of the water, hit a parked car, and an ambulance had to be called. So there's that, too.
Okay.
Which is dangerous. And another person has to put on sandbags to keep the water from coming into his house.
All right. Our manage will, manager will direct staff to look into this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No further citizen comments.
Okay, and no more from citizens. Okay, how about councilors? Counselor Paez, any discussion?
Well, I'm very happy to see so many positive things coming to Pottstown.
Good.
Thank you.
Counselor Lindsey, anything?
Yes. So a little bit of piggyback off the mayor's report. Went to the Halloween Parade, and I was very happy that she didn't change the date, because we had fabulous weather for the kids, so it was great. The Pottstown Children's Discovery Museum, they had a, a little event there at this Smith Family Plaza. That was nice. Of course, Huntsville High Street, the Taste of Carousel. Yeah, so we went there, and my grandbaby came, and she was, I had, I had to watch my grandbaby that day, so it was perfect. And she did, I said, well, wait till I finish judging, and then I'll take you on the carousel. She's like, no, don't go on the carousel. So Stephanie was nice enough to take her on the carousel. So yeah, that, thank you, Stephanie, for doing that for me.
And I love my grandbaby.
So she enjoyed that. Let's see. Oh, and the interview with Urban Land Institute, that was, that was nice. I, that was my first time doing that. And I like how they gave us some input of what happened when, the last time that they came, and how we're doing now, and what should we do to move forward. So that was really informative to go to. So I was appreciated that they asked me to attend. I went to Franklin Elementary School, they Trick or Treats. And Dawn and I and his stepdaughter, we went to La Desserts, ribbon cutting ceremony? Was that her? Yes, we went to their ribbon cutting ceremony. Best ribbon cutting ceremony I've been to. It was nice. Let me tell you, they blessed not only their business, but they blessed all the businesses in there. So it was not only a ribbon cutting ceremony, but it was spiritual. So awesome. In November, Lily's Grill, excuse me, is having a fundraiser for Go Fourth. That's November 14th at 4:00 PM. Professional Pharmacy, because that's my pharmacy, I like them. They are hosting a small business event, November 30th. And I'm not sure if you guys know about this. Oh, but yeah, this one. Moving Forward with Amy Wolf. She has a podcast, and she interviews, like, all the new businesses and stuff. So every business that she talked to, she said the process for coming in is fabulous, and they, and all of them credit Peggy Lee and Justin. So I want to say a special shout-out and thank you to you guys, because they always throw your names out there and say that, that the process had been getting better. They said, I don't have any problems. So that's a good, that's, that's good that we get, that we're moving forward. So I just wanted to say that to you guys. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Counselor Ebedinsky?
Is it still the sixth, or is it Thanksgiving? I have nothing. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay. Vice President Culp?
I have nothing, and I have a Thanksgiving, and it's wonderful. It's Pottstown.
Oh, you'll, you'll see him again. We're coming back here Tuesday. Counselor Prochel?
Well, I'd like to thank, because Philly's Fire Chief Chad Quinner for making the parade kind of special for my three-year-old. He's, the little boy's like obsessed with firefighters, so we let him, you know, tag along on the parade in a fire truck. And with two of our volunteer firefighters, too, Evan Gabel and Elias Cipia, were really good guys and really kind of reassures my faith in our volunteer fire company. So that was a lot of fun.
Okay. Mayor, anything more?
Okay. Oh, I had, sorry. I just want to brag, because I never had a hot dog at Berryglass. Every time I went, before they closed, it was like a breakfast or something. So then they closed, everyone raving how awesome these hot dogs were, and now I forever never want to have a hot dog from here. So at my scavenger hunt, at the scavenger hunt fundraiser, that was one of the clues, and you had to eat a hot dog and take a picture with the owner. So I finally had my first hot dog at Berryglass. And I have to say, that is the Berryglass Hot Dog. And the owner was leaving, and that place was packed. And again, I have to say, it's pretty awesome going into Pottstown and seeing a bunch of people that I don't know. From all over, people are coming out and engaging in the community and participating in our events and eating our food and drinking our drinks, and it is wonderful. So I want to thank you all. And...
We, we heard the same thing from George Wasnok this morning.
Yeah, so, didn't work here.
Yeah, but he's been around 79 years. Now he comes into town and doesn't know anybody. Okay. Anything else?
Happy Thanksgiving. I will not be here, but I thank you all.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Great. I, I do have one thing to announce. I have asked and got acceptance from Trinita Lindsey to join our Chairman Joe Kirkland on the Ricketts Oversight Committee.
Is that name going to change for Ricketts? Or is it going to be Ricketts and not Olivet?
Well, Olivet is the people who run it.
And that's going to change, like, on our?
In, in town, it's the Ricketts Center. Yep.
Yeah, that name will change.
No. Okay. We will be having an executive session. We'll be talking about personnel. No action will be taken. So as for tonight, meeting adjourned.